Time. Uh, there you go.
There, but that doesn't go where it's supposed to go.
Welcome everyone to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of September 25th, 2017. Before we stand for the pledge in a moment of silent meditation, I'd like to remind everyone that this is United States Rail Safety Week, and please be safe around our tracks. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will read items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment today, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, just a reminder to the public, due to the City of Lincoln Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day holiday, there will be no city council meeting on Monday, October 9th. However, city offices will be open. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through five.
Would anyone like to testify on any of these items? Next item, please.
All right, next then is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item six, application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 176 feet by 83 feet at Pinnacle Bank Arena at 400 Pinnacle Arena Drive on October 14th between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lorenz. I'm general manager with Pinnacle Bank Arena. What we're asking for today is an extension of liquor license through an SDL for an area on the northeast side of Pinnacle Bank Arena, what we call the stadium terrace. It's on the concourse level. It's the area through that northeast entry. We'll be hosting our guests from Ohio State that day. That's why we don't have a time yet for what it starts. Once the game's announced, this will begin three hours prior to the game and end at kickoff. It's an area that can be fully enclosed. They'll be using the inside also, and we'll have all of our staff up there to handle all their needs. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. The, um, lot of hoopla about how wonderful the arena is and how it's put Lincoln on the move and, um, so the arena management, SMG, keeps coming to the city council to ask for time and space in order to put on more supposedly income-producing activities. Yet, after years of operation, it's in the red. Taxpayers continue to support the arena operations in many ways. One of them is through the state with the turnback tax that was a gift to cities in order to keep arenas such operations going. An occupation tax that locals pay on every time they eat out, buy deli foods, or stay in a hotel. There's a subsidy payment for it from the federal government that was also a gift for the recession, although we're not sure that Nebraska needed it or Lincoln needed it. There are individual ways that people support it with their rents, the tickets they buy, the suite fees they pay, the energy payments, the parking fees, and so forth and so on. Yet, nobody seems to really know exactly what the income and expenditures are. Not even the finance department and maybe the city council does. I haven't heard anything about that. For example, is Pinewood Bowl keeping it going because it has very low operation expenses or vice versa? Public examination with a foyer results in redacted information. Contract with the UNL is difficult to understand, even for experts. Why is all this secret? Why don't we really know? One may be, one reason may be that the mayor has stated pretty directly recently that the 2015 vision is in charge of our city, and they don't want their image tarnished. That of Lincoln is on the move. And their other upcoming projects jeopardized financially or not accepted by the public. The very people behind the vision are making millions of personal dollars and winning elections with that money and that exposure. So, we say, um, it's good if SMG can make a little bit of money off of this operation that they want you to approve, but we believe you need to look into it more definitely. Talk to the finance department. Watch Dogs has received email from them. They don't know. For instance, Pinewood Bowl Arena.
One minute.
Income expenditures are not separate. So, the gist of our report is that it needs to be looked into and that all that glitters is not gold.
Are there questions for Jane? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item seven. It's the application of Buffalo Wings and Rings, BurgerFi, Gate 25, Hero 88, Rule G, Mellow Mushroom, Breezy Island, and Longwells for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 370 feet by 400 feet in the rail yard at 601 R. Street and 350 Canopy Street on October 20th from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., October 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and October 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Is anyone here to testify on this item?
Good afternoon, I'm Eric F. Marsh. I own Longwells. We've applied for this SDL for the Garth Brooks Weekend in order to turn the event into more of a street party for the community to come out and enjoy the weekend. There's five performances across the weekend, one on Friday, two on Saturday, and two on Sunday. We're gonna have a logistical challenge like downtown Lincoln has never seen when he lets out of one concert waiting to let in the next. And we're gonna give the people a place to party, provide music on our stage there, and expand our current entertainment license to enclose Canopy Street and the sidewalk along our street as it encompasses Longwells and Mellow Mushroom.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Marsh? Carl, then John.
Yes. Thank you. The rail yard is open until 1:00 in the morning.
That is correct.
And I see that you have asked to be open until 2:00.
Well, we all have liquor licenses till 2:00.
Okay.
And the SDL rules allow for us to ask for it even later than that, but we decided because it was a weekend and this was a special occasion that we would ask to have that extended hour for this one weekend of the year.
Okay, will there be live music going on outside?
No, the live music will probably stop around 11:00 or 12:00, whatever our normal live music is. There's a, the hotel right there on the rail yard. And not everyone is there to party, so we typically cut off our music, I believe, at 11:00 or 11:30 every Friday and Saturday. We will respect that same timeline.
Okay, great, thank you.
John?
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Marsh. On Thursday night, how late will you, no, I'm sorry, it's just Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, pardon me. On this particular application, you're asking to have the liquor in the Canopy Street, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Can you explain why not limiting that to the rail yard itself?
Well, number one, it would be very challenging to police that because we expect thousands of people. We typically have around 1,000 on a normal weekend come down, and that fills the rail yard. But especially between the two concerts, even late on that Saturday night and Friday night, we expect to have thousands of people party in there. We simply won't fit in the rail yard. That's the reason we've asked for the, for the SDL.
Now, there what, 12,000 people roughly per concert?
Something like that.
So, maybe overlapping 24,000?
Yeah.
And how many on a football game?
I think if you stood up there and counted, we'd probably end up with somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 at our absolute max capacity in the rail yard.
But for a football game, you get 90,000 people, so this isn't quite the same magnitude of a football game.
Well, the football game is six and a half blocks away, and not everyone walks our direction. And not everyone is outside at the exact same time that do walk in our direction. Here, you're gonna have quite literally 10,000-plus people waiting to go in, and you're gonna have 12,000 people having come out. And there's gonna be a period of time where Pinnacle Bank Arena has got to basically sweep the building, both physically get people out of it and clean it for the next concert, and those people standing there are gonna have no place to go. So, I believe it'll be the biggest concentration of people we've ever seen in the Haymarket period, the rail yard very specifically. We've only been around for four years.
I think the concern I'm leading up to is when the whole entertainment district was approved there, the use of Canopy Street was to be very minimal. And so, I'm wondering how often you see the use of it?
Well, this is, I believe, our sixth application in four years. So, from a business owner, I believe it's minimal. I'd like to see it more, but right now, we see virtually no reason not to do this one.
And you've got all the guards and everything that you're hiring to police?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify?
Michael Barton, and I am the owner of Buffalo Wings and Rings, 3055 O'Shea Drive is my address. Obviously, I am just mimicking what Eric had to say. I have a little bit different, I don't know, agenda, but we're all on the same page, which has obviously been unusual for us a little bit down there. But also, for us, on the second level, I know, John, you referenced not being full or at capacity. When we get full in that capacity, that directly affects our business because that means nobody can physically come in and up the stairs, and normally that concentration is on the first level, not necessarily on the second level when they cut, they cut people coming in and out. And so, obviously, when, like Eric said, when there's 10,000 to 12,000 people that are waiting to go in and 10,000 to 12,000 people that are coming out, if we don't have this extra breathing room, this space for, you know, for people to be, that will affect the amount of business that we personally have. So, obviously, that's one of the reasons that we signed off on this as well. As well as, you know, there's probably 50,000 to 60,000 tickets sold for this event. Many of those people are coming from outside of Lincoln and have heard of the rail yard and are coming for the rail yard experience. We want to be able to provide that to as, obviously, as many people as we can.
Okay, questions for Mr. Barton? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good.
Mr. Gerrard, move approval of items six and seven.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Larian. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold? Yes. Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item number eight, approving a contract between the city and Treat America Food Services for the annual services for meal preparation for aging partners. This is for a four-year term with the option to renew for one additional four-year term. If anyone here is here to testify, they can. I would note for the record that we do have a request to place this on pending, no date certain.
Would anyone like to testify on this item this evening?
There you go, you can have that to sit down.
Thank you.
As a person that eats down there, and Carl's been down there, been going for a number of years, there are always problems.
Could you introduce yourself?
Mike Morosen, 1500 North 15. Thank you. Taxpayer. You know, the main things is there's a letter there that was given to one of the workers, and so you'll get a kind of a flavor of what was kinda going on. But I do think there's some steps that need to be taken. I think the state has to act upon this a little bit before it becomes final, kinda putting the cart before the horse, maybe. And also, as you can see, you know, there may be positions available in which you may retreat to. Interesting use of the word retreat. It is also possible you're qualified to interview for vacant positions for which we are presently recruiting. And, of course, you can see the letter basically came out September 1st, and they were given until 4:30 on September 8th. I feel they should've been given at least 15 days or more because that's a big decision when you have somebody that's worked there for a number of years and just coming right out and saying, you know, your job has disappeared, it's not online anymore. The meals are always prepared the day before, you know, but, you know, a four-year contract, I think it should really be a two-year contract on this experiment, you know, with the option to renew so that you kinda get a flavor. Four years out, you get into it, there may be some problems, you may not be able, you can rescind the contract, you know, if that is in the contract clause in there. But there is a lot of food that does go wasted. Last week, they had beef tips, and they were pretty hard, you know, for some of the people to be able to chew. So, there are some problematics with some of the food. Traveling all the way from Omaha, it's gonna be reheated. Increment weather may present some problems. So, I mean, I want you to take a look at this. This person here, you can contact on this letter, will give you some help, you know, in understanding this. There's a big population that does eat the meals, you know, down there, but, you know, it's kinda in a flux. People are kinda worried about, you know, the meals themselves, you know, mac and cheese doesn't travel well, you know, for a long period of time. So, I just want you, you know, I wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor and to be able to understand a little bit of this so that you could delve into this a little bit more because most of the people came up, they knew I'd come down here, and I just wanted to let you know there are some people that are worried about, you know, this changeover. Of course, people are losing their jobs, and I think that a better job could've been done in notifying these people, you know, instead of rushing it forward because, you know, when you've worked there that long, some are still under the two-for-one, so they feel like they're just kinda being pushed out. So, that's kinda the feeling, but that's what I wanted to do, is just bring you a little bit of flavor, you know, of what's going on, you know, with that, and hopefully it'll work out, but, you know, we used to have meals on Saturdays for lunch, that disappeared. We had a salad bar.
One minute.
That was problematic, you know, kinda disappeared a little bit. So, you know, most of the people, it seems like the first places they come to extract money from is either parks and rec or senior centers. Well, you know, there's a lot of people that depend upon that, you know, for their meals, so. So, thank you for listening a little bit, and I hope this information will kinda give you a different way to look at it.
Questions for Mr. Morosen?
Yep.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Okay, Anna Marie Chikowsky. And I work in the dining room, and the meals, I think, you know, they're accepting. I think the big problem for most of the people there are the three that got fired, you know, because they've been there a long time, and, you know, I just, I wish it would've been done better or at least give them some help in finding work, you know. I don't know if they can go to the front, if there's a list of jobs, if they can get, because they all have seniority, but I think that's the biggest thing I hear is the food, you know, they're gonna go with the food, but the three that got let, they're, most of the people are pretty upset about that. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mrs. Chikowsky? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify?
Michael Funk, Lincoln resident, taxpayer. I am not very much in favor of balancing our budget on meals for the, on cutting costs on meals for the elderly. I've, you know, as a taxpayer, and I may not, because of my income, I may not pay as much in taxes that some other people do, but I am darn proud to pay as much tax money as I need to to make sure people in my community are fed, whether they're children, whether they're elderly people, or whether they're just poor. And I've, I can't say I'm very supportive of this, of this contract proposal to, just to try and cut costs. And I, if possible, I would definitely be supportive of what this gentleman said earlier about, if nothing else, change it to a two-year contract instead of four so that if there are problems, they can be dealt with sooner.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Funk? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify?
A question for staff. Could the Director of Aging Partners please come forward? Randy Jones, thank you. Randy, I thought you-
Randall Jones, Director of Aging Partners.
I thought you might just like an opportunity to explain the request to put it on pending no date certain. And then also, if you could, the question, I guess, that arose from seeing this reduction in force letter is just what, what the impact is on the department as this is placed on indefinite pending, and you've let people go, how you will continue to serve meals in the interim.
Sure. The purpose for the indefinite, requesting an indefinite hold is we received word last, like, 11th hour from the state of, state unit on aging, that they wanted to approve the contract and the change in model before council did, and said that if we didn't, it would put in jeopardy our reimbursement for senior meals. That's a change from what we've seen in the past. Of course, this is a major model change, so that's why we requested it to be put on hold a week. We've gone back to the state and asked them for a time period to, when they'll be able to review our documentation and provide us approval, and they've not been able to tell us what that date would be. So, that's why it's indefinite.
And are the folks still being asked to go, even if you don't have the new contract in place to provide meals from elsewhere? Will you be able to produce meals?
Oh, absolutely. So, with the delay, we went back to the staff and offered to extend their employment. Now, we have four staff in the kitchen. We have one full-time cook and three part-time employees. Two of the employees are classified, one is not classified. We offered all three to extend their employment. Two chose not to. One has agreed to extend their employment. We have other staff that are able to work in the kitchen indefinitely until this is resolved, and we won't see any type of breakdown or break in service.
All right, other questions? Cindy?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for being here, Randy. So, if I recall, there's a couple of things that I heard that I'd like to have you address. One is someone was concerned that there would no longer be hot meals, but these are going to be hot meals, correct?
Absolutely, they are. And we've worked with the Health Department to approve the manner in which they are served. They arrive hot and ready to eat. We have heating equipment at each of our sites where the temperature will be maintained, and also, the meal then served hot and ready to eat. We cannot re-cook meals because that means the temperature would've dropped. We have to sustain the temperature so that it meets Health Department requirements. This company that has been on this project has been in business for 56 years. They're accustomed to this type of work and transportation of food. They have 11 other customers in Lincoln that they've been serving, and we've contacted two of those recipients, and they're very pleased with the services in Lincoln. We also know that they serve our counterpart in Omaha, Eastern Nebraska Office on Aging, and they're very pleased with the product as well.
And so, they make sure they're well-balanced and that kinda thing?
Right, they have to meet, in order to qualify for the federal funding this receives, they have to meet USDA and guidelines, and then those guidelines that are set for senior citizens.
And then the other thing that was brought up was maybe changing the terms of the contract. And as I recall, under the terms of contract, though, it doesn't mean we're tied in for four years, there's some kind of a clause.
There is a 90-day-out clause.
Okay.
Yes.
So, at any time that's not working out, we can-
Absolutely, I'd have to dive into the contract to see under what conditions we can-
I do remember that, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, sir.
If I may address another question that's come up, I think, in the paper recently, and that's related to why a Lincoln organization was not chosen. Because this is a federal grant, we had to, we had to bid it as a federal grant and provide opportunities for those serving in the Lincoln community to bid on it. We had a total of 75 bid notifications that went out. It was also a public notification as well. And 41 of those were Lincoln organizations that were notified.
Okay. Mr. Jones, how many responded out of the 75?
Two. Yep.
And where was the other one from? I know one's from Omaha.
That was a Lincoln company.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item nine, Comp Plan Conformance 17014, approving an amendment to the 48th and O. Street Redevelopment Plan to add the Skate Zone Redevelopment Project for the demolition of existing buildings and construction of a four-story hotel with approximately 84 guest rooms, a 5,600-square-foot retail building, surface parking, and associated intersection and right-of-way improvements on property generally bounded by R. Street on the north, 48th Street on the west, 50th Street on the east, and N. Street on the south.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, the applicant in this case, on behalf of the Urban Development Department. This is the Bliden Substandard TIF designated area in the, in this location. It was done in 2003. This is O. Street, this is 48th, or 48th Street, rather, here, and as far as 52nd. This is the parcel that we're talking about, and this would be a close-up of that parcel, putting us on 48th Street and on 50th Street. When my 43-year-old daughter was eight years old, we went there to have her birthday party at Skate Zone. Spent there a long time, I bet you've been there as well. The owners have had it for a long time, and they wanted to get out of the business, close the property, and put it on the market and sell it. the property, and put it on the market and sell it. But the, the buildings are in rough shape, and although we never got inside to take photographs, this is, now the asphalt parking lot that you can see is broken up here, a good deal, potholes there. This is some of the concrete structure on the outside with its deteriorating columns, and not just one, but all of these have those same conditions. This is the corrosion that's on the metal roofing. The building is not completely secured, at least it wasn't on the day that we took photographs. This doorway is in fact open now as the building is unoccupied. You can see the rotted wood of the overhang here, and this is a close-up of one of those outer structures. I haven't been inside, but I'm guessing that if the outside is like that, there's a matching condition inside. The new potential owners would like to build about 60,000 to 7,000 square feet of hospitality business and a 5,500 square foot retail building that would replace the 16, I'm going to make that 19,000 square foot roller rink that's there now. The Planning Commission has overseen the process so far, rolled unanimously in favor. The Urban Design Committee has seen it as well in favor. And if you were to take a look at why the city would want to do this, one, you'd want to make sure that a building of this age and of this condition would want to be renovated. In fact, the comp plan says that, as does the plan for this area. So you'd want to replace them with new structures, and this does that. You'd want a denser use, which this does. It also has a traffic signal. If we were on, let's see if I can, maybe this one will show it the best. No, I'll need to show a slightly different picture. There is now a traffic signal to help with the traffic from Target, which is over here, coming out to 48th Street, and then that traffic light is here. There is an access point here that's right in, right out, but the city has always wanted to have a matching connection here, signalize this so people could go all directions but protected. It would make the intersection safer for everyone. This would allow us to do that, which has always been in the books, but we've never been able to afford it before, and so that's another good reason to consider this. One of the things that this does that's consistent with the long-term plan and the 48th area plan is connecting 50th Street and 48th Street. With a cross utilization pattern here, other landowners will be able to go in and out to 50th without ever having to enter 48th Street. And that's a virtue in, inside the plan. What's there now, I think I showed you the parking lot. What will be there in the event we're able to complete the ultimate construction is a new parking lot and a good deal of landscaping along that, with the building much more closer to 48th Street, which is also in the design for this area as a positive. Move the buildings closer to the street, put the parking in the back. This will accomplish that end as well. The total project that we're hoping to find a home for in this area is $11 million of private sector investment, $960,000 of tax increment financing. We need to describe the project well enough so that if you allow us to do this, we can bring back an agreement with the developer to see if the council would consider supporting the project at that time. I'll be happy to answer questions. The developer's here and would be happy to answer questions as well.
Questions for Mr. Landis. John?
Thank you, Mr. Landis, for outlining that. Could you again address how you would open up that intersection on 48th and get all the way to 50th and?
There are two parts to that puzzle. This is the existing traffic light, so it controls traffic this way. This is the existing access point. Now, there is a median break here, which means that you could, if you wanted to, be able to get across this way and make those turns. If we move the access point away from here and to this location, and then signalize these lanes, which are not now signalized, you'll be able to control the intersection from essentially all four directions for the maximum safety and control.
I think those northbound are signalized.
This, the northbound is signalized, right. This one is-
Both, both north and south.
Both are.
Both are.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't seen them there. They will get moved to, if it's a movement or whatever. This will be, the traffic will not come here, it will come out here, and these buildings will not have to use this area to come out on 48th to go over to 50th. They'll be able to do it by connecting these, these parking lots. So the connectivity will allow them to make the connection without going onto a arterial to get to the adjoining street.
So the traffic, if they turn to the east off of 48th, they're going to be going through parking lot of this development?
There'll be a cross easement, which is not uncommon. At the corner, for example, you have the Staples and the CVS. They have a shared access point, and they are both able to use that same thing. You'd be able to do this, and you would also be able to get to 50th Street. If you're here, you can't get to 50th Street because there is no exit over here. So if you do, you come out, you go all the way around, or you come out and go in here and come down. This would allow you not to have to use the arterial to make that kind of a transportation. You'd be able to do it between these two properties.
When you add something like that, I'm curious what the traffic engineers responded as far as the increased traffic. The Staples area, CVS is internal there. I'm wondering with this retail and the hotel, if you're going to have not just people going there, but they think, well, instead of going north on 48th, for example, I'll just cut over 50th and have you increase traffic on a private parking lot?
Remember that we're dealing with 48th Street, which is, you know, a major arterial. And in fact, the comp plan says locate the, locate projects of significant dense commercial use on arterials, so that's, that's an appropriate thing. Secondly, the project has been taken to the Friday morning places where the Planning Department, the Public Works Department, Building and Safety, and on occasion, Urban Development. So they show that up and show the, the design and review what's there. Public Works has raised no objection. What I can tell you is that the hope to get the, the intersection used at that location in this fashion is consistent with, I've been told by Public Works, with what they would have liked to have done when it began, but didn't have the resources to do, so that we're moving close to what Public Works would choose to happen, not further away.
Could we make it a school song?
Be quiet. You have a magic wand and so much power. I'm sure that if the council wanted to, you could make it happen.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln on behalf of Access Development, which has this property under contract. This is the former Skate World site at 300 North 48th Street here in Lincoln. I reacquainted myself with the Blight Study, which was really adopted by the, the city in August of 2004. The redevelopment plan was adopted in January of 2005 to really address the underutilized auto dealerships that were located at 48th and O. That redevelopment plan has been partially implemented, not fully implemented. There's still some remaining parcels. This redevelopment area extends all the way to R Street on the north and N Street on the south and, and 52nd Street on the east. This site was identified as the prime site for redevelopment within this project area. The existing property owners continued this arena Skate World use until just this past spring. It closed in May of 2017. The plan, the amendment that is in front of you, does try to achieve several objectives of that original redevelopment plan. The 50th Street has been a great addition to the area, really decrease some of the congestion in the area, take some traffic off of the major arterials. Another objective of the plan is to simplify the roadways and consolidate driveways. Another objective of the plan is to beautify the streetscape area. And one of the other things that the, this amendment does is try to meet some of the stormwater improvement objectives of that plan. This is a large grade change on the north to the south of this area, and regrading of the site can greatly improve the stormwater challenges for this general area. So the plan amendment in front of you really intends to continue the redevelopment of this area. The owner has decided to sell the property and move forward. I, I just wanted to share a couple of things. Director Landis has corrected the site. The project was in front of the Urban Design Committee September 5th. True Hotel is intended to be a use for this property. It's a four-story, 84-room. It's a, it's in the Hilton family, and they have a, it's for the young hip crowd evidently is what I'm told. Evidently, I'm not going to be a invited guest, but the Hilton really wants a presence in this area. And then Director Landis also mentioned there's a retail building, a 5,600 square foot retail building that will be more or less complying with the downtown design standards, really putting the building out at the edge of the property and, and hide the parking behind it. And this is the rendering that was in front of the Urban Design Committee on September 6th. Director Landis did also mention the driveway relocation, and that is a prime objective of the Urban Development Department. There's a, there's an agreement that dates back to 2003 between the city and their present property owner to relocate the driveway to match up with the curb cut on the west side of 48th Street so that can be, take full advantage of the signal. The good thing about it from the perspective of the city, the city is responsible for installing the signal. If the use changed within a certain timeframe, that timeframe was not met, so now the project is responsible for that cost. The city's not responsible for the cost of that signal. So this project will be able to address some of those objectives of the original 48th and O redevelopment plan. And our schedule moving forward is we have, I think on your forward schedule for next week, with the redevelopment agreement is scheduled along with the bond ordinance, and then a vote after the Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 16th is our schedule. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Larry?
Could you talk a little bit more about the anticipated number of new jobs that could be associated with these two new properties that will be built? I noticed in the staff report, they said maybe as many as 40, is that right?
Yeah, we, we said up to 40. Obviously, the staffing for a hotel is fairly known, and I think that's kind of a known quantity. That's going to be in the 20 to 25 range. The retail, the users, end-users have not yet been identified, but based upon the square footage and the retail emphasis, the one thing I should add is that when the retail building was really presented at the Urban Design Committee, the Urban Design Committee requested some changes, and the developer made those changes. Originally, it didn't have the, enough glass on the west facade of the building, and it didn't look like a front door that, along 48th Street. And so that, that change has been made, and I think it was a change for the better because of the review of the Urban Design Committee. But once those users are identified for the retail building, I think we anticipate another 15 to 20 jobs within that area.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, Mr. Houston. On the architecture, it appears that that has some of the same, for the retail building, some of the same continuity that have a CVS on the corner and-
Um-
Or maybe I just-
Yeah, I, I don't think it really is.
I'm not trying to hold it to that. I just was wondering about the beautification that we've been working on at 48th and O for a decade.
The other thing that impressed me is that True Hotel, like most national franchises, have certain design requirements for the hotel, and they changed them because of the input of the architects and their requirements of the city of Lincoln. Even though there aren't any specific design requirements for this area, the fact that the city of Lincoln has the review process coupled with the, the redevelopment process enabled the city to get some better changes on, on that facade. Now, the retail building, I think, I don't think that's really intended to be consistent with the adjacent retail. It's, it's designed by local architect, Reed Architecture, and it's supposed to be high-end retail in the area.
Would the exterior have some complementary design to that area?
Well, I believe so. It's, it's going to be high-end architectural-grade paneling and metal paneling, so I believe so. That was a subject of discussion at the Urban Design Committee, the materials used.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
I am against this development because I have lived in Lincoln my entire life, and over the past five years or so, I have seen the effects of gentrification in Lincoln from high-end retail, high-end hotels. This is a Hilton. This isn't going to be a cheap one. And, you know, just more high-end shiny stuff being built downtown, and then my apartment a mile away is somehow worth more, and I have to pay more to live in it because there's shiny stuff a mile away. And that also contributes to our property tax problem. It will only get worse the more and more we give tax increment financing to projects that are going to be, like I said, high-end retail, high-end hotel, high-end dining. If we, if we keep going further and further and further down that road, I mean, one, one of the things that is, one of the biggest draws to Lincoln is you get to live in the city, and housing is cheap, but it's not going to stay that way if we keep giving out tax increment financing to every high-end hotel that asks for it. And I mean, parents who send their kids to the university, a big economic driver in Lincoln, they don't want to pay $700 a month for their kid to live in a hole in the wall. But right now, 500 a month pays for a hole in the wall. And it's not going to be very long before that hole in the wall costs $700 a month if we keep giving more and more tax increment financing to every developer that wants to put up a shiny new hotel and is complying with safety regulations.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Sorry.
That's okay. Would anyone else like to testify?
Hi, my name's Donna Roller, and I've lived in Lincoln most, all of my adult life, and I frequent this area a lot. I shop at Natural Groceries. You've got next door, you've got a service, auto service area. You've got a motel on the other side, next to 52nd Street. I think that's what it is. On the other side, you've got high, you've got high V traffic coming in. As far as I'm concerned, that whole area is a congested mess. The way you've built the dental Aspen there, and you've got the office supply there, and you've got CVS. To get into each of these things is a maze, and it's crazy. And, and I'm looking at that map, and I'm going, there is not enough room in that lot. I'm familiar with that lot. It's narrow. What you want to cram in there isn't going to fit. It's just going to add to more traffic congestion. And right now, if I go down 48th Street and I turn to go to Natural Groceries, I'm turning into the auto service. I'm going in front of all the service buildings and the lanes where they, where the cars come in and out, and then I'm coming around back to go to Natural Groceries. So now you want to combine another high-end traffic pattern into that mess. You say, well, it's going to be easy to access, and, and you'll relieve it from 48th Street. What, you want it to be in front of the auto repair? And, you know, I think this is a bad idea, and I agree with Michael Funk. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 10, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Lincoln in support of a Community Veterans Day Parade in order to honor local veterans and promote community spirit through an annual community parade.
And for the record, we will be entertaining a motion to delay this until the 16th of October with testimony and a vote continued to that date. Does anyone here would like to testify on this item?
Michael Funk. I, I wholeheartedly support the idea of a parade honoring veterans. I'm not terribly sure that the second week in November is a great time to hold a parade. I think if, if it's scheduled for a day that's, that normally has a bit warmer weather than November, it'd be a great way to get more people out there, get more people involved. And like I said, I, I wholeheartedly support having a parade to support veterans, and I, I really appreciate your comments, Mr. Christensen, that I read in the paper where, you know, hey, why don't we have any parades? We're, we're Lincoln, Nebraska, you know? We're, we're one of, we're the second biggest city in the state, and we're not, we don't quite look like we're celebrating it, you know? So like I said, I, I really like the idea of, of a parade to honor veterans. I don't know if Veterans Day particularly is, is the best day to do it, even though it is a day reserved for them. I also believe we can celebrate our veterans any day of the year.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Funk? Thank you.
I'm Ed Snobel, 1173 17 South Woodswood Drive in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I am a veteran, independent and working. And- in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I am a veteran, independent and working. And I wholeheartedly endorse this. I've wondered for years, as has my other friends, why Lincoln does not celebrate Veterans Day. We do have a Veterans Walk that goes from Memorial Stadium to Antelope Park to the Veterans Garden, but they have to use the sidewalks. So, I do appreciate you coming forward to have this. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good. Next. Oh, you can use this other microphone if you'd like.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. It's a good idea. Why is it not held near the veterans' area on Seventieth? Seems like it diminishes the whole idea to have it in just a small part of town. The other thing is, you better plan to have lots of security because it's going to be ripe for some protesters that are going to come out, even if it's in a smaller part of Lincoln. It's very likely that you're going to have some kind of negative reaction to it. The way the country is at this point, nothing is sacred, nothing is honored or respected. Is there a reason why it's being held in Havelock and not on Seventieth where the veterans' home is?
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
No answer?
This is not a forum where the public asks the council questions. We hear your testimony. If you wish... Anyone wishing to ask questions of the council members can do so at another venue.
Hmm. In the past, if I've asked questions, they've brought somebody forth to answer it.
Well, since I am the introducer of this, you'll have to ask me in a separate forum.
Okay. You're calling a different protocol?
Yes.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good. Next item, please.
All right, next is our Public Hearing Ordinance's second reading. We have one item. Item eleven, ordinance approving, number one, an amendment to the master site lease from the city and the county of Lancaster to the County Public Building Commission. Number two, an amendment to the master lease agreement from the commission to the county and the city. And three, the issuance of not to exceed one point seven million of the commission's tax-supported lease rental revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017.
Good evening. Scott Keane, Emeritus Investment Corp., Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell. We're here tonight to address the ordinance of the city to authorize the issuance of refunding bonds for the Public Building Commission. The commission's Series 2010 bonds are outstanding in the amount of one million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. They have an average interest rate of approximately three point eight... Excuse me, three point eight percent. In today's market, we could refinance those bonds at a rate of about two and a half percent. And our plan is to try to proceed to market within the next couple of weeks to take advantage of the current interest rate environment. At these interest rates, the savings to the Public Building Commission would be about thirteen thousand dollars per year, or on a present value basis, about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Not the largest of the Public Building Commission's refundings. They've actually issued four series of refunding bonds since 2005 with present value savings of over five and a half million dollars. So, this is a fairly small issue, but the building commission at their meeting last week did approve proceeding with the refunding to at least provide some tax relief for the city and the county and their participation in this financing. Mike has maybe just a very brief description of the ordinance for you to consider.
Yes, good evening. Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell. The ordinance in front of you authorizes the refunding. Before the Public Building Commission can move forward with any financing, including this refunding, the City Council must approve of the financing. As Scott mentioned, the Public Building Commission has adopted a resolution to move forward with this refunding issue. This ordinance authorizes an amendment to the site lease and the master lease for the property associated with the bonds, authorizes issuance of the Public Building Commission bonds in an amount not to exceed one point seven million dollars, and otherwise requires the financing to be done in accordance with the resolution adopted by the Public Building Commission. So, happy to answer any questions.
I would only add to that, our plan is to proceed to a negotiated sale of the bonds on October 5th, and the 2010 bonds will be redeemed and replaced with these 2017 refunding bonds on November 10th. So, it's a fairly quick process.
Very well. Are there questions for Mr. Keane or Mr. Rogers? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good. Next item, please.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. We'll start with Item Eight, the contract with Treat America Food Services. We've had the request to place it on pending, no date certain.
Moved that we place this item on pending, no date certain, while the state reviews the proposed changes.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Nine is Cop Plan Conformance 17014. This is the amendment to the Forty-Eighth and O Street redevelopment plan to add the Skate Zone redevelopment project introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Cindy?
So, I'm sorry to see Skate Zone go, and I was thinking how wonderful it would have been to have a hotel there while we still had that wonderful putt-putt golf course. Anybody remember that of that area? So, we have all this great things going on there, but I miss the fun spots, too. But I have to tell you, I've been in that Skate Zone building in the last year, and I have grandkids that skated right up until May. And he was right. There's some things inside that match the outside, and it's time to see an improvement there. I'm pretty excited about this project and about being able to kind of connect all the different businesses that are there, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Larry?
Just want to say in response to some of the comments that we hear you about gentrification. It's a really delicate balancing act between growing our city and making sure that we continue to have an affordable city for all people, and we are in discussions about that on a regular basis. So, thank you for bringing that issue to us.
Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is Item Ten, the resolution to a Veterans Day Parade annually. This was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
I think I heard John first.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane.
And then we did have the...
Request to maybe move to delay this with continued public hearing till October 16th.
Second.
Moved by the delay, moved by Larry and seconded by Cindy. And just so you know, the purpose of this is a request from the administration so we can take a closer, more in-depth look at costs the city may incur for this. So, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Thirteen is Street and Alley Vacation 17007, vacating the north-south alley between Gladstone and Judson Streets between North Fifty-third and North Fifty-four Streets, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Larry. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Fifteen is Change of Zone 16036A, application of Wilderness Hills LLC to amend the Wilderness Hills commercial planned unit development at South Twenty-seventh and Yankee Hill Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Fifteen is Change of Zone 16036A, application of Wilderness Hills LLC to amend the Wilderness Hills commercial planned unit development at South Twenty-seventh and Yankee Hill Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Sixteen, Text Amendment 17012, amending Chapter 27.72 of the Lincoln Miss Book Code relating to the zoning ordinance height and lot regulations, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Eighteen is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Anderson Homes for the sale of city-owned property located near the intersection of West Redberry and West Thatcher Lanes, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item Nineteen, approving a lease purchase agreement between the city and Stryker Sales Corporation for the purchase of LifePak monitor defibrillators and a video laryngoscope, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane.
Could I ask for some staff clarification to come up, please? Jeff and Chief DeSpain?
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
Thank you both for being here tonight. Since the public hearing on this item, a question came up about using the enterprise fund for the purchase of defibrillators that end up on our fire engines and trucks. So, could you speak to whether or not we are in compliance with our code as we proceed with this item prior to voting on it?
Yes, let me go first, and then the chief can fill in. You raised a question this morning. I thought it was a reasonable question. When we looked into it, we couldn't see that there were any definitions of the enterprise zone that this would violate. And when you're talking about providing emergency medical services, there's no question that that's what these are for, regardless of the apparatus that they're put on. So, we didn't see it as a problem at all. And in some cases, because of the way we're structured, if you send out a truck and you're using the defibrillator from the truck to keep someone alive until the ambulance gets there, then that helps to put revenue into the enterprise fund. Whereas if, unfortunately, if you don't have the defibrillator there, by the time the ambulance gets there, there's no potential for a revenue source for the enterprise fund in some cases. So, it was an interesting question, but we felt comfortable that it didn't violate any sort of restriction.
Chief DeSpain, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, if it helps moving forward, one of the recommendations that I made to council was when you're trying to find that line of what would be in the enterprise fund and out, probably the easiest way to look at it is if you were to just separate that out, meaning, let's say, we divested ourselves from the ambulance transport service, and we pushed it away to save a private provider. What would the private provider need to do to basically provide the same level of service? So, if they did, they would have to, you know, buy all that equipment and move it out. They'd have to find their own place to rent, to deploy the ambulance, their own administrative people, payroll, HR, all of those functions. And then typically, what you see is they would want an exclusive operating area, meaning they wouldn't want to compete with anyone else, or otherwise, they won't come in because they won't make any money. And then what they would do is any... To maintain that, what they would do is they would want to provide resources to the fire department, who are the first responder on the front end, just like what Jeff was saying about. They want to help provide best patient care, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also because they don't make money unless they transport a viable patient. If the patient dies on scene, you call the coroner, and they get no transport. So, typically, what you see in EOAs is they provide those resources for advanced life support, and even some basic life support to the first responders. And so, in this case, clearly, an enterprise fund expense, and this is the industry standard.
John?
Yes, Chief. With what you just said, you confused me. This money is not coming out of the enterprise fund.
It is coming out of the enterprise fund.
It is. Okay, no, and that's where it should be. Okay.
Okay. So, I have still some question on this subject because back in 2000, we created this thing where the city runs the ambulance service. And it says in city code, there having been... And I'm just reading straight from the city code. There having been previously created a fund designated as the EMS Enterprise Fund, all monies received by the city as payment for ambulance services shall be credited to the EMS Enterprise Fund. Such fees collected and other revenues shall be used exclusively for the operation, maintenance, and administration of the city ambulance program, including but not limited to personnel, equipment, maintenance oversight, and expenditures related to billing and collections. So, to the non-lawyer in me, which is all of me, it sounds a lot like that money can only be spent on the ambulance program. You're saying that the ambulance program includes equipment on the other apparatus the city has?
Right. The ambulance program is everything it requires to transport. And so, that's a federal designation of an EMS supplier versus provider. I know that sounds confusing, but we are a provider of transportation for EMS. And so, everything we need to get a patient into the ambulance alive and to take care of that patient into the hospital is considered part of the program. That's how we determine our rates. That's how the federal government requires us to do that. And so, this is the case where, when you talked about equipment to handle that, this is equipment that is part of that continuation of patient care from beginning to end.
Okay. Is there anywhere else this money could come from reasonably at this point?
Not due to the deadlines. We would... If we didn't approve tonight, we would miss a deadline on the grant. And so, what would happen is we could fund it a different way in about a year or two at about double the cost.
Okay. And one other thing, you know, I was... My ears perked up when we heard this about this the first time in council, that there's a video laryngoscope. Now, I'm familiar with how those work, and I was thinking, how could that possibly have any use to an EMS in an emergency? Could you tell us a little more about that, and tell us about how much that costs?
Well, the provisions within that grant basically gave us the number of life packs, the twenty-seven life packs. The vendor, to help sweeten the pot, basically said, if you go with us, you also get the pick of one piece of free equipment. That was this list of items. And the EMS providers that run the program decided that was the best use for that extra item, and it's basically used for training.
So, you're not going to be using this on any live patients who are getting ready for transport or anything like that?
It's a training program.
Got it. Very good.
Chief, thanks for coming. Jeff, thanks for your help. I'm still a little confused on ambulance versus engine. So, some of these pieces of... Some of these health, lifesaving devices will be placed on engines? Is that true, or...
Yes. So, out of the twenty-seven, a number of them will be placed on engines. Most of them will be placed on ambulances directly. But let's say that we had a few in the ambulances that are now damaged. They need to be, you know, sent back to the manufacturer for warranty work. We go pull one off the shelf. Well, instead of setting them all on the shelf, we're deploying them into the field for use.
So, I guess my question would... Thank you for that. Is you referred mostly to ambulances, and I wanted to point out that some of these equipment would be on engines, which also go to scenes to do lifesaving.
Yeah, and I think it's semantics. It's the program is not designed for everything to be on an ambulance. It's designed... to be on an ambulance. It's designed to support the ambulance program. And so the ambulance program by definition is transportation of a patient from point A to point B, and everything it takes, beginning training, supervision, payroll, HR, storage of the equipment, everything at the beginning and everything to the end to restocking the ambulance. So the picture is much bigger than just the box ambulance that you see driving around.
Vehicle.
It's the program in in totality.
Thank you.
John?
At our budget time, you've talked about the enterprise fund and how with the Medicare reimbursements and so forth, that you're getting narrower and narrower excess monies. Will this further impact that amount in the enterprise fund?
It it will, but actually this could help support in in the sense that when we, so we're still pursuing the what we call the ground emergency medical transport legislation. It was passed. We're now in negotiations with HHS Department of Health and Human Services to get that new program in place. So we're in that process. This would count towards that reimbursement, whether it was in the enterprise fund or not. But it is much simpler. If you put it in the enterprise fund, it's much easier to track. So we would get it either way.
I agree. The enterprise fund is the the place it should be since I helped form that. But I just want to keep thinking down the road economically or revenue wise. Thank you.
So there are thirteen ambulances, right?
There are twelve ambulances that we consider frontline or reserve. And then there's a thirteen ambulance that's kind of like if we really need it, it's it's a little old and beat up. And so we kind of use it more for training, but it could be placed in service if we needed to. So yes.
So if a private enterprise were to take over tomorrow, running our ambulance service, wouldn't the department have to buy all of our own medical equipment to be used on the engines and trucks?
Well, that would be negotiated with the private provider. So we would not allow them to come in without bidding on the exclusive operating area. So they would hopefully have some competition. And so what they would do is say, if you allow me to come in and provide service as an exclusive operating provider, because they, to use the term monopoly, they need the monopoly to make the money because there's transports where you don't get paid at all, payer profiles are different. So if they came in, they would say, we want to provide this. And to get the, for you to give us the EOA, they would bid for it. And typically that bid will say, here's what we're going to provide, here's the cost for transport, and this is what we're going to provide back to the entity providing the first responder services because it helps our business model. And that's typically all the advanced life support equipment and sometimes training.
Okay. Are there other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on this item? Okay, I'd just like to say before I call the roll that I appreciate what's being done here. I'm not completely comfortable with how the funding source is shaken out, but I'm persuaded that if we don't do it this time, we lose the grant money. So.
Do you have a comment, sir?
Okay.
I also wanted to echo that, the appreciation for LFR's work, and also, you know, that they did look for outside grant funding to help support these costs. And it's helping us have some of the best cardiac arrest survival rates in the nation. And when we were briefed on this a year ago, we learned that we have a sixty-nine percent survival rate, which is better than LA, Chicago, and Detroit put together. So I think that's something to be really proud of. And we'll make sure they have the equipment they need.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next is item twenty, approving amendment number one to the annexation agreement between the city and the Rockabye Road Coalition Property Owners. This was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion?
We do have a motion to amend number one.
Someone like to move that?
Do we have it?
Where is this motion? Yeah, that'd be good.
Did you all receive a copy of it? I thought it was going to be emailed out to you.
Hmm. Is this the substitute?
Yes.
Okay.
It was linked online.
Yes, we did link it as well.
I'd like to move motion to amend number one. It's a substitute amendment number one for the annexation agreement to reflect the fact that the property previously held by the Charles J. Marquardt Revocable Trust and the June N. Marquardt Revocable Trust has been acquired by the Lincoln Federal Bank Court, Inc.
Second.
And moved by Jane, seconded by Cindy. Discussion, please call the roll on substitute amendment.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
So we've substituted. Now do we need to vote?
Yes, on the main motion.
So please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next is item twenty, COT Plan Conformance one seven zero one zero, declaring approximately thirty-four and a half acres of property located South Eighty-fourth and Yankee Hill as surplus introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item twenty-two is COT Plan Amendment one seven zero zero three, amending the twenty-fourty COT Plan by redesignating future land uses in the area of Jensen Park from urban density residential and industrial to green space and from open space to urban density residential and commercial at South Eighty-fourth and Yankee Hill introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item twenty-three is approving the land exchange agreement between the city, Milton Telcott, Carol Telcott, and R.C. Kruger to reconfigure Jensen Park by exchanging approximately thirty-five acres of park property on the south side for approximately forty acres of private property on the east side introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, Carl?
Just real quickly, just want to congratulate our Parks and Rec Department and the developers for working together to to actually come up with a swap that that works better for both parties. So it's a good job.
Yep. Long time coming. Took quite a while to get this done. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items twenty-four through twenty-six. Our ordinances on first reading are items twenty-seven through thirty-one. Our pending list date certain are items thirty-two and thirty-three. Our pending list are items thirty-four and through thirty-six. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time since it is an open microphone night.
Would anyone like to testify? Now's the time. Come forward if you wish to speak.
Go ahead. Go ahead. He's not planning to speak.
He's not planning to speak. So come on forward.
He was ready to go home.
Good evening. I'll make this short and sweet because we all want to get home to dinner. My name is Lou Broatz. My address is five zero two zero, South Fifty-Sixth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Been a property owner and a parent in this town as long as my kid's been alive. What I'm here about is, quite frankly, I didn't think I was going to be coming back, but I'm coming back because I was here on September eleventh. And we went through and had a resolution go through seventeen R two two six. And what I'd first like to start with is, again, a quote. And the quote is, "Leadership is practiced not so much in words as in attitude and actions." It's from Harold Janine. Harold Janine was a businessman in in Britain in the early nineteen hundreds. And I figured some of the questions around the previous discussion was business propositions. I figured I'd bring a businessman statement to the idea today. Now, what I'm really down to is three opportunities here. Because as we know, that resolution passed five to zero. But of course, we had two that had health issues. And so the first opportunity is I would like to extend an opportunity to the two council people, including Councilman Camp, who is a representative or represents my district, to have comments, or if they'd like to, and express their affirmation in that resolution and in going forward and reinforcing the commitment like the rest of the city council did in standing against hate, bigotry, sexism, racism, and the such. That's the first opportunity. The second opportunity is a lost opportunity. The lost opportunity happened because, going back to that quote of leadership is practiced not so much in words, but as in actions and attitude. We saw the attitudes of some here in Lincoln this last week. We saw the negative attitudes of some who hid in shadows, defaced, and quite frankly, devalued the lives of human beings. I know. And then went a step further by going to the Veterans Memorial Garden and deciding to deface that as well. And I have to wonder if maybe my own comments on September eleventh about how we had wars that decided these ideas may have had something to do with that. And for that, I'm sorry if it did. But the opportunity lost is actually all of yours. See, because when all of those different buildings and those bike trails were defaced, that community came together. And they didn't cry about it, and they didn't, woe is me. Over a hundred people got together to make what's right, right. And I know that the city council was invited to it. And I do understand that some of you had previous engagements, but not one, not one of y'all could stand up and be the public servants that you just proclaimed yourselves to be on September eleventh. I have to wonder why that opportunity was lost. And the third opportunity is this. It's an opportunity for us all. The opportunity for us all to stop with what I asked for and so many asked for, which is to stop with the words and the actions and the salvation of the state is the watchfulness of the citizens as is put on the Capitol.
One minute.
But actually, one minute, but actually know that the salvation of this state is the actions of its citizens when it sees something wrong. So I present two opportunities. One to two individual council people individually, and one to all of you. Councilwoman Lamb, Councilman Camp, would you like to speak on H seventeen R two two six? And the rest of the city council, frankly, I don't want to hear any more speaking. I think a lot of people in the city don't want to hear it. We'd just like to see your action. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Would anyone else like to testify this evening?
Hi, I'm Donna Roller. And I live at two thousand Twin Ridge Road. And I've lived, I've told you, I've lived here all my life. And there's a lot of things going on nationally and politically that's not right. And it's going along party lines, and that's not right either. And what I'm seeing in this community frightens me. And what I'm here to do is to protect my own home turf. If we want Lincoln to be the city, to continue to be the city that we think we have, a nice friendly town, good place to live, safe, and all of those things, then we need to protect our home turf. Because the outside world is entering. And so Act for America was that rally that didn't occur. Somebody, one of you signed up for that. And I assume that you didn't know what it was. Here's some information on Act for America. It is an anti-Muslim hate group. We have Turning Point coming on to the university campus. That is a Nazi group. It's a Nazi group recruiting. And there's big money behind it. Big money. I want to talk Koch Brother, whatever. There's been an emphasis to take over our educational systems into a certain economic ideology. And and they're going, and they don't value higher education. And we have senators, state senators interfering with that. And and like Lou said, we have Nazi on the Veterans Memorial. I have a father-in-law who fought in that war. I have another uncle who was permanently damaged and never led a normal life because he was on the Battle of the Bulge. In my opinion, these hate groups, whatever it is, we need to stand against it. And we need to have a plan. Because Nazi, Germany does not allow Nazi symbols and speech. And why do we argue that that's freedom of speech when we fought a war and bled for it? It is not right to have that kind of hate perpetuated in this state. And certainly, if it comes into town, what are we going to do? You got a resolution. That's good. That's a start. What's the plan? You know, do you need my help? Do you need community help? What do you need? Because we are going to stand in front of that. Because if we don't stand in front of all of this, we will repeat history and we will be a fascist country. We are well on our way. And I I am just here to express my concerns. And if there's a city committee or or some kind of thing where we need to get citizens organized to stand up to this hate, let's start. And I will not stand for any more racism. I'm tired of that. We need to get beyond that. Let's educate ourselves. And by the way, do you know what this means? It's used by our president and a lot of other people. It's calls for white power. It is a Nazi symbol. And Make America Great is is on medals for the KKK. We need to be aware of all this nostalgic things. They change their symbols all the time. Tomorrow, this may not mean that. We need to be educated. We need to be aware. We need to know what we are up against. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify this evening?
I have a quick question.
You have to stand up and come up to the microphone.
I was kind of trying to follow through the items on my list here. And I was, I I'm having a bit of trouble figuring out whether we're still on like first reading resolutions or just.
We are at the very end of the agenda.
Okay.
Where it says open mic.
All right. Well, I'm I'm also very concerned about the recent string of vandalism we've had in it. I don't know if everybody in this room quite understands just how extensive it is. A few months ago, a place called De Commons LNK in the near south neighborhood, south of downtown, was vandalized because they have a Black Lives Matter sign in their window. I forget if it was shortly after or shortly before that, Indigo Bridge Books Downtown in the Creamery Building, they were vandalized because they have a sign in their window that says hate has no home here. And then, of course, there was the War Memorial vandalism this last weekend. And last week, the eight to ten homes and businesses along the Mopac Trail that were defaced with some pretty nasty messages. Now, in the late days of the Obama administration, they approved, I forget if it was four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars for an organization called Life After Hate, which is actually ran by a former white supremacist who works to de-radicalize people who are violently racist, violently misogynistic, violently anti-Semitic. And I'm not terribly sure what all the rules are governing what a what a public legislative body can appro, whether a public legislative body can appropriate money towards any specific private entity. I'm not sure what all the rules and laws are about that. But in order to try and work against this this recent increase in hate crime that we've seen in Lincoln, I would ask that you consider a a small donation to the organization Life After Hate. I would gladly pay more than what my tax contribution would figure out to be to that organization. And I'm talking a thousand dollars or less. A small contribution. If if five hundred cities across the US did that, we could completely replenish the funding that the Trump administration, sorry, I didn't mention that earlier. The Trump administration revoked that funding for Life After Hate almost as soon as Trump took office. So that's why I'm asking that we consider a small contribution to them. Because if if five hundred cities across the US donate a thousand dollars to this organization, or, you know, maybe the city council can't do it, but maybe they, maybe the executive branch can do it through a grant or something. Like I said, I'm not sure about all that. But I would be very appreciative if our city council explored options that might be available to us as a city, whether it's through. that might be available to us as a city, whether it's through you or through the executive branch and just collaborating with people and talking with people, what we can do to help support this organization and try and stem the tide of this increase in hate crimes in Lincoln and around the country. I mean, around the country, violent hate crimes where like human-on-human violence has taken part rather than property damage has, it spiked immediately after the Trump administration took office. And like the lady before me said, you know, we're not, we're not safe from it all in Lincoln like it sometimes feels like we are, because it's coming here. And, or people who are violently racist or anti-Semitic enough or homophobic enough to go and find somebody's home, because what happened on the Mopac Trail kind of looked targeted. They, I'm very concerned that people who are homophobic, racist, misogynistic...
One minute.
Thank you. Homophobic, racist, misogynistic in Lincoln are, you know, if we don't do anything to try and counteract that proactively, I fear that the, the people who are all, who live here and already predispositioned to that kind of hate are, they're going to keep feeling emboldened the more time passes before something pretty, pretty serious is put in place to try and counteract that. I'm finished.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, you can hand that to the clerk. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. You know, there's all lots of stuff here pronounced, in the newspaper pronounced, officials pronounced how, what a wonderful place Lincoln is. It has its good points, but I went to a neighborhood watch meeting in August as I am a representative from Pinehurst. We have a gang unit in our police department. We have a sex trafficking unit in our police department, and we have a drug unit in our police department. And heaven knows what other kind of units we have. So, you really need, as leaders of this community, to be aware that there's another side to rah-rah Lincoln and to giving money to wealthy developers to build hotels and apartments that many believe, and these are experts, think it is overdone at this point. Some of this money needs to go to addressing these kinds of issues, because it isn't nice little Smallville anymore. I get real discouraged with extreme talk. And again, when we start bringing it, one against the other in a public forum, it doesn't always help. I think you need to have some more protection here in your council meetings. I thought that for a long time. Sitting up there or anybody who appears here is at risk of whatever happens that could happen. So, we're not immune from that kind of thing. If the city council, if the mayor, as Ms. Baird says, is thinking about the poor, then it needs to come out, because generally, we don't hear about a lot being done for the poor in this town. The Lincoln vital signs came forth with a lot of issues, but there was no response from the city leadership about how to address that. So, apparently, that's just been left to them to do what they need to do. So, keep in mind that things are difficult in Lincoln as well as they are in the rest of the country, and to be proactive to protect our citizens and to be alert to what might happen.
Thank you. Questions? Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd move for adjournment.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.